I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission meeting, June 26, 2018, meeting at 6:00 PM. First item of business, we do have a quorum, is to approve the meeting minutes and the public hearing minutes from the May 29, 2018, meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept it's submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes pass. First item of business, site plan, 5486 Murfreesboro Road, Lot 4, requested by Jim Lukens. Property located at 5486 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18B Group E Parcel 5, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Jay Sharif. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is site plan approval for 5486 Murfreesboro Road, and this is, this lot's located southeast of here towards Smyrna, and it's across from Minerva Street, and it is zone C2. And on the, on the larger side, there's an older metal structure that's been there a long time. And you can see, get my light to come on. The structure there is on Lot 3, and Lot 4 is, as you can see here, is just south and east of the existing metal structure. So on this lot, they're proposing to build a new building of 9,000 square feet, and there is a sidewalk that they've indicated on the plan that's six feet wide, that runs in front of Lot 4. And also, the driveway apron is 40 feet wide at the road. And they did provide architectural elevations and a materials board for tonight, so that is here for your review. And that's the, there are no planning comments. They addressed those with the sidewalk, and I think there's one engineering comment. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one outstanding technical item for the engineering side of things. It is relatively minor. It has to do with the layout of the fire-water system that's going to be feeding the sprinklers. My recommendation is that with the, if the Board is okay with it, all the architectural type details, the site location wouldn't be changed or anything. So we could definitely correct this when they get their land disturbance permit, and I can work with the engineer to rearrange essentially the plumbing.
So it is something you can deal with before it gets too far?
Yeah, it can be fixed in arrears. They just, they failed to put a meter on the fire line.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Is there a representative here?
Is there a representative this evening? If you could please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Jerry Curtis, the architect for the project. Jim Lukens is out of town, and so he asked me to step in for him tonight. And I'm from Franklin, 204 Green Valley, Franklin.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the applicant?
We discussed the workshop, which you weren't obviously involved with, but the dementia on the four car parking spaces on the curve, 40 feet down to 24, we're just concerned that there's enough dimension there to get traffic through there. Just want to get your comment back. We're just on the curve into the lot itself.
Oh, you mean as far as the curve?
Yeah.
In front of those? Well, if you notice, they back up to the outer radius of the width of the drive. So if you see that line that Jim has drawn straight across there?
Sir, you, you can, no, you can point with that if you want.
Okay, if you see this line right here?
Yep.
Those, there's a radius around the back these, they're normally 18-foot deep, right? So you're 18-foot there, and then you've got a full, good, the drive coming behind the park, behind the back end of the parking space, does that make sense?
It does.
So my question, whether if you had a car coming in and a car coming out, could they cross or not?
I don't see why not.
They have been provided 20 feet from the edge of radius to edge of radius. That is per the fire code, and it's also consistent with standard engineering practice.
So if the building did catch fire, it is sprinkled, correct?
Yeah.
It will be sprinkled, yes, sir.
Full sprinkling. All right, tie to the non-perishable construction of full sprinkling. Unlimited area, it's actually 9,600 square feet, retail space. We, we had you all have asked me some comments before that we weren't aware of, but you had asked for us to, this is the end that faces, this is the end that faces the street, that we put a band under here, put these windows in on the end, just the front of the building, you know, because of the elongation of the lot. We tried to decorate this up, and what we'll probably do is put a main building name up here on the building, you know, maybe it'll be able to earn retail or something like that, or just, you know, something that will define the building more from Murfreesboro Road. And keeping the desert tones, and then aside, the building next door, just kind of sort of looking a lot through, just to look just like this. So we're gonna try to make the neighborhood step up quite a bit. So if you all want to... Just real quick. This is the stone that goes up the towers and down the bands underneath. This is the concrete block on the back that's painted this Sherwin-Weems color. This is the ephes on the ends above the stone and across the top up there that will all match the back of the building now. Reason this is a little darker is when you get out in the bright sun, paint has ostensibly been like two shades or three shades lighter, and would look too white. And trying to keep with the earth tones look that we've got here on the color, we went with a little darker shade paint. And we met medium bronze. We didn't go with the dark black bronze, but we're keeping with the earth tones of the whole, whole building.
I see.
So that we could sort of create this neighborhood as we develop these two lots and then the next two.
Well, what was the roof you made out of? Roof? The roof?
You won't be able to see it.
Flat roof, rubber?
Yeah, it'd be an EPN.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for the applicant, for staff?
Y'all don't have these colors on your thing, do you? You don't have...
We appreciate putting the windows on the...
Yeah.
That was one of the questions.
Well, you asked, I mean, that's, that makes sense. And on the sample board, we did put a little color elevation thing on the back, too. So you'd have that all there. And each of the names of the materials are also listed on the elevation, and they're exactly what's on the board. So all the names of the living storefront being the metal caps, and all that, is that medium bronze, painted block on the back, and then the color of the tower stone and the name of everything. So I think that...
Very good. Thank you all very much for bringing that in. Any other questions or comment? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Thanks.
We're ready to start building tomorrow, if you guys are.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion, accept it, submit it.
Have a motion to accept it's submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item.
We all, we all keep those?
Yes, sir, please.
Keep those, okay.
Next item, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Adam Lanning, 2.17 acres, property located at 117 Lidle Street, tax map 017C Group C Parcel 10 and 12, current zoning district R1 Low Density Residential, proposed zoning district R3 High Density Residential, property owned by Jonathan A. Lanning. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request for rezoning is on Lidle Street, and just off Old Waldron Road, and the applicant is requesting to rezone 2.17 acres from R1 to R3 High Density Residential. And the applicant has not given much indication of future plans, but in one meeting, the applicant did mention possibly building townhomes if this site were to ever be rezoned. And you can see on the zoning map, all of the properties, they're in orange or R1, so it is completely surrounded by R1 zoning. And the, the dark navy blue here is I-2 Zone, and then the red is C2. So the only other residential zoning in the area, and it's not really close, is this piece up here on Old Nashville Highway. And there are some more photos there. There's the sign when it was posted. And you see on the ortho image, it is a very wooded area. I, I think it's entirely wooded, actually. And so that's the 2.17 acres, and they were here at the workshop two weeks ago, and I have not heard from them, and I'm not aware that anybody else has heard from them since that time. I do have, I was provided by the residents in the area, and I told them to make a copy and to hold on to the original for the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. So these are copies of people that have signed a petition thus far, so I'll just pass this out, and you all can view that.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments by the Board?
Yes, Chairman, what we discussed is at the workshop with the applicant was here. I mean, for me, it's just a classic, it's a classic item of spot zoning. There's no other zoning R3 around it, and so with that, I'll make a unfavorable recommendation to the Mayor and Alderman.
We have a motion for a unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We will be sending a non-favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman in regards to this rezoning. Next item, site plan requested by Palmer Engineering for Bobcat of Nashville, property located at 149 Industrial Boulevard, tax map 017 Parcel 23, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Nashville Property LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is site plan approval for the existing Bobcat facility that's located on Industrial Drive, and they are proposing three additions to the current facility. And I'll come back to the pictures, but here's the, there's a close-up of the building. So industrial's here, so this is west, the front of the building, and see, one addition to the side, and then the other side has an addition, and then the rear of the building. And the existing site's 3.4 acres, and the existing building is 12,171 square feet. And the, the associated parking and driveways that are added are all proposed to be made of concrete, and there is a sidewalk indicated on the site plan along industrial as well. So here's pictures of the existing building. I'll be looking towards Smyrna. There's the front, another angle of the front, and then this is the side, southeast side, and you see the equipment. And then there's a industrial drive, and the American flag is on the Bobcat site, so that is their flag, as far as I know. I haven't been told any different. So, and they're not proposing at this time any changes to signage, because they've got, the existing signs are adequate. So there's, all the planning comments have been addressed, so there's none of those left. So I think there's one engineering comment.
Mr. Leach?
Mr. Chairman, Board, in the workshop, we mentioned that we needed to sprinkler the building. The engineers' response indicated that they had every intention of sprinkling the building. They just didn't annotate it on the site plan. So I feel that if representatives just willing to get up and say they're going to sprinkler it, I also have it on paper that they're going to sprinkler it, so I have every reason to believe they will, so they can correct that before they get their land disturbance permit, at least in my opinion.
Very good. Is there a representative here this evening for this project? If you would, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Bill Fort with Palmer Engineering, 2817 Erica Place, Nashville. Yes, well, just compare the building, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize you wanted me to note it on there, that was my fault. I think we all asked about a elevation. We did do an elevation, we did just apply an elevation. Everything is to match the existing, all the colors, the band on the bottom, so I think that was the only other outstanding question.
And so the sprinklers are just not noted on the plans at this point? Is that...
Just want to say this with Chairman, I mean, this Board historically has been very prescient on items being addressed. It was in the workshop, we discussed the workshop. All the other 10 items were addressed, this one wasn't, okay?
Strictly, I didn't realize that it had to be noted on the site plan. Usually sprinklers are a part of the plumbing documents and not specifically to the site plan. So that was my, my error in not realizing that, so again...
I understand that, but the previous item that Adam brought up was a notable one. This, I think, is a big one. It's something that, you know, we try to keep away from doing contingencies. That's the bottom line. And with that, I just feel it's just procedural that it should have been addressed and noted on the plat. It's just procedural. I understand that he's going to do it, but if, if, if all, if all the members, the staff are, you know, left tomorrow, only shows, you can show in the minutes that you agreed to it, so you could build it without putting the sprinkler system in. So that's just a procedural thing I'm just concerned about. I mean, you come to the workshop, we discussed it, we talked about it. You addressed all the other nine items and not this particular one, that concerns me. I understand if you forgot it, I understand that, but between you and staff, it should have been worked out.
If we deferred this to next month so you could get it on the plans, what do you think about it?
In my opinion, that the engineer and their transmittal noted that they were going to sprinkler the building. We typically don't show the Board the transmittal showing where they've addressed items. They'll usually send us a list, one, two, three, four, five, what they intend to do with the item if it was corrected, what changed. The engineer who transmitted this set of plans did indicate that they had every intention of sprinkling the building, and of course, there is always the option that we can decide not to give them a land disturbance permit until it's corrected, or, I'm not speaking for Randolph, but we can also hold out on the building permits until sprinklers are basically shown as part of the building.
And in good faith, I mean, we added the extra additional landscaping on there that y'all wanted, and again, the sidewalks, too. So I mean, if this was a, again, I will apologize, it was my error for not placing the note on the plan, but we have it in the letter, and we're certainly amenable to it. I mean, it's not...
With there being documentation that they are going to sprinkle the building, can we attach that to this?
We could.
Randolph, you have any problem with it?
Excuse me, they won't get the permit without, without sprinkler plant.
What about you, Fire Marshal?
Again, they wouldn't be issued a permit through codes, and then at the end of it, they still wouldn't be able to get their certificate of occupancy without sprinklers being provided in the building.
So staff, fire, and engineering is fine with it?
I am.
And we can attach the...
Letter.
Letter to the packet? With that, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the site plan pending the acceptance of the printed requirements of the sprinkler system to be attached to said request. With that being said, I make a motion to accept the site.
We have a motion to accept it's submitted with additional paperwork attached to the packet. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ooh.
And we will do a roll call this evening on this item, starting with Mr. Coats?
Ooh.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes?
What was your vote?
I did not, but I will vote aye. I try not to vote unless I'm breaking a tie or something. Next item, number four, for the request for Barge and Cuthbert Associates has been deferred. Item number five, site plan requested by Morton Buildings for 113 Cheerful Place, property located at 113 Cheerful Place, tax map 017J Group A Parcel 15, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Mary Albright. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get too far into this one, I don't believe there's been a word in two weeks from this applicant, and Mr. Leach and I discussed this today, that typically when they get this far in the hole, so to speak, they, they need some time. So if there's no one here, I don't know that the commission could vote on this tonight anyway.
Did we not discuss deferral with them?
Did.
And they didn't, they didn't submit, or were we taking it as their comments as a deferral?
Are they going to send an email written, documented?
I believe you made a request for an email or documentation, so we're just...
Yeah, and I didn't receive it, so...
Let's proceed, sir. So what have you got on the report, sir?
I'm sorry?
No report, sir?
Um...
Other than what we already had?
I'll serve at the pleasure of the Board. If you all want me to go through it all, I will, but I think they'll be back probably at the workshop in a few weeks.
If we could, could I, could I, I don't know if I need to suspend the rules or whatever, but I'd just like to, if we could just go ahead and make a motion on it, and I make a motion to not accept due to the technical items present on the, on the application.
We have a motion to deny a submitted, sir?
Correct.
We have a motion to deny a submitted due to the technical items. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion does not pass. Next item. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Number six, preliminary plat, Webb Estates, property located at intersection of Hollendale Road and Morningside Drive, tax map 014 Parcel 23.16 and 23.17, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This approval is for Webb Estates and the preliminary plat, and this site is located at Hollendale Road and Morningside Drive, and all of these lots are zoned R1, and the applicant is proposing 11 new residential lots, and these would all be laid out for single-family development. And they had no technical items at the workshop, so there's none to address tonight. There is a general note about the sewer, so I think Mr. Leach will address that.
Mr. Leach?
Chairman, Board, there was one engineering technical note about critical fill lots that was addressed by Mr. Womble. We have discussed the sewer in this area several times. Mr. Shreeman has offered kindly to kind of meet us in the middle if the, we can work out the logistics on potentially doing a per lot fee to fund some improvements to the local sewer area. The logistics of that are still being worked out between Bruce, myself, and Kyle, but thus far, Mr. Shreeman and Mr. Womble have been very good to work with, and I believe we can get through any issue presented.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
I have, I have a question for Mr. Logan or Mr. Leach. Is this just a typo? Because I've got 14, 15, and 16. Should that, it says continuation.
I've got this here, sir. Continue to page two.
That should be the rest of the...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, okay, I just got, we're sort of bouncing, okay. I mean, I like the fact we're using front and back now. That saves paper.
Very conservative. Any other questions or comments from the Board in regards to this project?
I want to appreciate the engineer and the owner for making adjustments as we discussed at the workshop, and if it looks like they addressed everything. With that being said, I'll make a motion to accept it's submitted.
We have a motion to accept it's submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to the next item. Final plat, the cottages of Lake Forest Phase 6B, requested by Womble and Associates, property located near Holland Ridge Drive and Nixon Way, tax map 014 PO Parcel 6, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Laverne LF Holdings LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of our client, Womble and Associates is requesting final plat approval for this Phase 6B of Lake Forest, and this phase constitutes 29 lots on approximately 5.3 acres. And this phase will have two new public roads, and they will be both interior public roads. And all the planning technical items have been addressed, and I don't know if there's any outstanding engineering, but let Mr. Leach speak to that.
Mr. Leach?
Mr. Chairman, Board, as a note, this concept, preliminary plat, plat was originally approved as a single unit. It was Phase 6. It was later broken up into 6A and 6B for the developer's convenience. The only revision that occurred with 6B that was not part of 6 was a minor shift in roadway alignment, so the construction plans and everything else stand from previous approval.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the Board?
Appreciate the owner and engineer obviously putting together the sidewalks on both sides of the street. With that, I'll make a motion to accept it's submitted.
We have a motion to accept it's submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Set bond amount for final plat of the cottages of Lake Forest Phase 6B, requested by Womble and Associates, property located near Holland Ridge Drive and Nixon Way, tax map 14 PO Parcel 6, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Laverne LF Holdings LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As outlined in the ordinance, the developer's supposed to obtain three bids, and they did that, and the total amount that they had, I don't have the report in front of me, but I know Mr. Leach and myself have looked at that, and the amount, the average was taken, and it's in your reports for your packet, so we'll be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Sorry about that all. Any questions or comments from the Board? That will entertain a motion.
I should accept the bid of the $126,500, or the estimate bid for the subdivision bond.
We have a motion to accept the stated amount. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, set bond amount for final plat of Brookside Phase 2, requested by Huddleston Steel, property located off Corruthers Road, tax map 029 Parcel 28, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by BNF Development LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And also on Brookside, the three bids were obtained, and staff has reviewed those, and the total amount was $201,111, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any... We have any questions or comments from the board? Entertain a motion on this item?
The bond, submitted.
A motion to accept the bond is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, request for recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance, Hollendale Estates, Phases sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine, property, property located near Hollendale Road, tax map fourteen, PO parcels eleven and eleven point eleven, R2 medium-density residential zoning district, property owned by Laverne LF Holdings LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Over the past, uh, several months, the developer has been working with the city, um, uh, to correct any deficiencies or outstanding items, and, um, uh, staff has, uh, received word from the building official and the city engineer that the, all the items on the punch list have been taken care of, and, uh, so they're ready for acceptance tonight.
Very good. Everything's covered on that one? Everything's taken care of?
Yes, sir. As far as, uh, as far as I know, I've been notified everything has been covered.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Questions? We'll entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to accept, or accept the, or, let's see, we're doing a mayor and Alderman, so send a favorable recommendation for the acceptance of Hollendale Estates Phases sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine.
We have a favorable recommendation for acceptance of the Hollendale Estates. Do we have a second?
Aye.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And I'm gonna, the second was from Mr. Holmes. And final item, bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach?
Mr. Chairman, Board, in the back of your packet, you'll see a listing of our current bonds. The only thing that has changed from previous month is we extended the bond on Hampton Roads Estate Phase Three for one additional year, and we have, uh, released the bonds for Center Point Spec Two, fourteen, and Nakurato. They have been in the ground for more than one year, so their maintenance bond has come to an end, and those are the only changes.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Meeting adjourned.